All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is our Thursday. We'll go ahead and get the meeting called orders. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting. Thank you all for being here with us tonight. This will actually be our final Thursday board meeting. So beginning next month, they move to the third Monday of each month. Our board meetings will be on Mondays, so we will be transitioning to Monday in March. First Monday will be work session, third Monday will be our regular meeting. So that calendar is up on our website. We're trying to constantly remind people so that we make sure everybody's still there. Couple of quick announcements before we go outside of that, before we go into the rest of our agenda. First is, right now, our boys and girls are both playing in the region championship in Lumpkin County. Mr. Tatum was keeping up with the girls' game.
The girls won.
The girls won. Exactly. Thank you, thanks. I'm glad the game is over because otherwise he wasn't going to make a motion second or pay attention to what you're watching.
Boys just kicked off, but I can wait. It'll be okay.
But they have advanced. I know baseball season's up and going, and our clerk is hoping this meeting is not very long, so she can sneak into a baseball game while we come down here. So congratulations to all the high school sports for what they're doing. I think they're doing an amazing job. I'm going to ask Mr. Kirk Crafthill if you would, to open us with our invocation, and then following that, if I could have Sloane over, who are question of the week?
Not Kirk Crafthill. I got it.
Kirk Anderson.
Let him pray. Thank you for letting us gather around here again today, Lord. Thank the Lord for letting us gather among family and friends and colleagues. Please, Lord, watch over these proceedings, watch over our leaders. Please bless them, bless the decisions they make. Please, Lord, protect all these that serve in any capacity here at home and abroad. Lead us and guide us and direct us, let us do everything in your name, not heaven's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. As we move on into the approval of our agenda, before the approval, we do have a couple of amendments that have been added to the agenda that's posted online but weren't the on the original advertised agenda. Item one for amendments would be under section, under item C, a resolution to update service terms for Development Authority member Lori Shaw. Item two is under new business, item H, 2024 Elmig Sploost Asphalt Paving Project bids. And then under item three, under new business, item I, 2024 Sploost Asphalt Patching Project bids. Those came in after the agenda was originally advertised. One additional item that I will go ahead and mention as we're doing, don't see a need for executive session, so to remove executive session from the agenda. But with that, do either of you have any other amendments that you'd like to see? Do I have a motion to approve our agenda as amended?
So moved.
A second.
A second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Period. Moving on into our consent agenda, we did have one Optimist International proclamation that was on February the first, 2024, that the city of Jasper and county participated in Optimist International and signed the proclamation for that. I'd like to introduce that into the record for our minutes. Moving into old business with none, we'll go straight into our new business. The first item is going to public hearing. We do have an ordinance, we have two ordinances on the agenda that public hearings have been advertised for. The first is our ethics ordinance. So I might be called the public hearing portion of the meeting to order and introduce our Pickens County Ethics Ordinance. This was discussed in a prior meeting and in a work session where we went through in detail the ethics ordinance is adopting the state ethics rules and placing those in an ordinance and establishing a set of procedures with a hearing officer to hear any complaints that are presented in there. I know that's been provided to both of you commissioners prior to coming into tonight, but would like to open up for any public comments or questions regarding the ethics With none, we will close the ethics ordinance portion of the public hearing and move on to what we had on the agenda and what was advertised was our financial ordinances. For any of you that were here during our work session, two weeks ago, we went in depth through a lot of the ordinance, and our council was in the recommendation of dividing some of that from an ordinance into policies. So they're still in the draft phase of trying to do that. We had already advertised at that point that it was going to be the public hearing tonight, but I'd like to ask that we table the public hearing for the finance ordinances so that draft can be completed so that we make sure what needs to be in ordinance and what's in policy is divided out. So with no objection, we'll table that and call a future public hearing for the portion on finance ordinances. With that, we will adjourn the public hearing portion of the meeting and move on into our agenda. Since we have had the ethics ordinance presented at two different meetings, we've had the public hearing on there. I'd like to open up if either of you would like to make a motion for approval of that. I know you've both been involved in reviewing and get that into place.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion, please?
Excited to see it.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries, and we will get this provided to our provider to get that placed on Mina Code so that it is codified and placed. This has a place for each of us to sign.
Use that color pen?
Yeah. How do you think about that? While we're finishing signing that, we will move on into the next item on our agenda, which is the ACCG Roth Conversion Agreement Supplement. We added Roth as an option for retirement last year. One of the things that we did not have on our agenda was a resolution that would allow people to convert what their prior contributions were into their Roth. So ACCG provided us with a resolution in order to provide the opportunity for a conversion for employees to be able to convert their IRA into a Roth IRA. So I would like to entertain a motion authorizing me as chair to sign on behalf of the county that resolution to allow that option for employees.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, the next is a franchise agreement with ETC. This is for cable television. They have to renew their franchise on a regular basis, and it is coming close to time for that franchise to expire. They have provided the same information to be placed into a resolution, making that franchise agreement remain in place so that ETC can continue to provide cable television in our community. I know that was provided earlier in your shared folder for you to review. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look over it, and if you have no questions, I'd like to ask for a motion authorizing me as chair to sign on behalf of the company that franchise agreement.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is an intergovernmental agreement with the Development Authority. This was something that was discussed with council last month, I believe it was, and it was just to prepare defining the roles for the county and the Development Authority to make sure that we're in place as to what is offered by the county and what's offered by the authority, and for any expenditures that they incur up to $100,000 that the county would be able to reimburse for technical services on there. I know that that agreement was provided to each of you. It has been presented to the Development Authority, and the Development Authority has signed on behalf of the Development Authority and sent it back over for our consideration. So I'd like to ask if anyone has a motion to approve that intergovernmental agreement with the Pickens County Development Authority?
So moved.
Second the motion.
Move in a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Grant. The Criminal Justice Coordinating Council is awarded Pickens County government, applying on behalf of the Pickens County Sheriff's Office, a grant for opioid stimulant and substance abuse program. The grant award was effective beginning in January of this year through August of this year. The grant award total is for $3,619, and it will fund 120 units of nalotazone, which is Narcan, in order for the deputies to be able to have ready access for those. So with that, do I have a motion that we accept the grant being provided by Criminal Justice Coordinating Council?
So moved.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to thank Kelsey Essing for her work on getting that application in and getting that taken care of, and for the 500 pages that she left on my desk that I have to be signed if it was approved. Next item is on the agenda is listed just as, and I guess you guys probably have prepared if I was going through this, so you could see this behind us as we're going through, is a quick claim deed release of easement for water booster pump. This is in tape, where the water tank is located in tape on the property next to it is where our water booster pump is there. That property is being rearranged in terms of the way it's being sold, and what they've asked is for a quick claim, a release of easement from the county for the current easement, and then they're immediately replacing it with an easement that's just on the other side so that we would still have access to the easement to get to the booster pump. It does require a quick claim for that small portion of property that's would be from Pickens County to Mr. John Miller Handicap. The documents have all been provided. What I'd like to ask is for a motion to approve authorizing me as chairman to sign the quick claim so that we can have that easement moved.
So moved.
Second the motion.
Move in a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? That motion carries. The next item on our agenda is GFOA's Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting. This one's actually a much bigger deal than just a single line on an agenda. I think it's important to first kind of explain who and what it is, but I will open with saying there's 159 counties in Georgia, and only 40 have been able to achieve this mark. GFOA stands for the Government Finance Officers Association. We received at the end of January, on January the 31st, a letter from them stating that they're pleased to notify us that our annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022 qualifies for GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This was a tremendous undertaking from our finance department. It was a goal we set out about three years ago to try to launch into achieving and going through the process of making sure that all of our documents were in place, every bit of the information was provided on behalf of the county, and they've done a fantastic job. I know our auditors with Rushton have taken a look and helped review and gone through this, and we did receive a letter that they'd asked that we read. They aren't able to be here with us tonight, but coming from Rushton, they stated, "Congratulations on this well-deserved award. Without your diligent efforts and leadership, the GFOA award would not have been possible. Rushton's proud to be a part of this team. Your achievement is inspiring and well-earned. We look forward to working with you this coming year, earning this prestigious award again." Congratulations. As I said before, this is something that there are only 40 counties in the state that have been able to achieve, and our finance department has really not been able to. If y'all would, would y'all all stand up for one second? We can give them around a little. Just so I can make this even a little bit more uncomfortable, we have one individual who has championed spearheading this accomplishment, and is somebody that we've brought in with tremendous experience in the past, and she's going to kill me for actually calling her out on this one. Ms. Diane McNabb has been the one that has continued to keep this happening, that was the one that gathered all of the information to make this a possibility. It's kind of like having our in-house auditor with us at all times. I think we're probably as scared of her as we are the actual auditors. But because of your amazing work that you've done in making this a real possibility on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to present you with a plaque that states that we appreciate your outstanding work in obtaining the Government Finance Association Award for Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So if you would, would you come forward and we'll meet you in front? Yeah, it took some trickery to get you. I don't need to take an old one to take a picture, so it's kind of amazing. Thank you very much. You're amazing. So, and just take a picture and start looking. Hopefully, you'll get the right one at the right time. I know I wasn't looking at the right one that time because I heard it afterwards, so...
I'll be last.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Announcement. We've been looking forward to that announcement for quite some time as we launched into that gull and it's taken a lot to get there. Very, very proud. Next item on our agenda is the Elmig Sploost Asphalt Paving Project. We divided the paving project into two different subsections this year, one for asphalt paving, and we did the patching as a separate bid because some companies can do one, some companies can do the other. We held a bid opening on February the 8th, and we had seven contractors bid on the asphalt paving, patching project. We had eight on the countywide paving project. Just to give an idea as to what those entail, on the paving project, which I believe is the first weekend, on the asphalt paving project, was to pave Jones Mountain Road, Whitestone Road, Town Creek, Fairview, Mount Calvary, Twin Mountain Lake Circle from Old Talking Rock Highway to Cutzut Trail and Old Talking Rock Highway. Those bids went out. The low bidder, and it has been checked by all of our engineers to make sure that it met all obligations, low bidder came in on that project at $1,463,261.16, and it's Colditz Trucking Incorporated. They've verified and made sure that everybody bid on the exact same project, and our engineer, EXB, has recommended that the low bidder be awarded the paving project this year. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve going with Colditz Trucking for our asphalt paving project.
So moved.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The second on that same list is the asphalt paving, or the asphalt patching project. This gets confusing sometimes to say them without splitting them up. The asphalt patching project was for patchwork to be done on Antioch Church Road, Eagle Perch Road, Fairview Road, Jones Mountain, Mullenax, Talking Rock Road there at State Route 136, Whitestone Road, Mount Calvary Road, Salem Church Road, had a couple portions, and Tatum Road were the different ones that went out to bid. That bid, like I said before, we had seven contractors bid on that. The low bid also came in from Colditz Trucking at $299,044.11. Our engineers have reviewed and compared and made sure that it met all of the requirements that were there necessary, and they've recommended moving forward with Colditz Trucking to complete the patching project as well. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve that bid.
So moved.
Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions?
Can they just pave all the roads while they're here?
Which, I was going to say, Tatum Road...
If we had all the money, then they would do all the roads. That's the only downside to it.
Tatum Road is not related to my family at all, so...
All right, so I do have a move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Then we'll get those approved and processed through. As far as action items, we do have several sets of minutes. We have a regular meeting and executive session minutes from January the 18th. I know that those minutes were provided to each member of the board prior to tonight to give you a chance to review those. With that, I would like to call them separately since one's an executive. Do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from January the 18th?
So moved.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The second would be our executive session minutes, and then you've had a chance to review those as well. Do I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes from January 18th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The other two were from February the 1st. We had a work session and a call meeting back to back, and those minutes were provided as well, and hopefully you've had a chance to review those. If so, I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve those together.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. All right, we'll move on into the rezon, or the request for changing land use classification portion of the meeting. We do have six separate rezones to go through tonight. There were seven that were before the planning commission. One has withdrawn their application, so if anyone was here and you don't see one that you were expecting to be here, they withdrew their application following the planning commission meeting. First one is a request for changing land use classification on parcel 068151 located on Eagle Perch Road. Sorry about that. The Planning and Development Office received an application on October the 18th from Branding Kent requesting a change in land use classification of rural residential to suburban residential on a 2.31 acre tract located on Eagle Perch Road in Ball Ground. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, was to make it two separate parcels. Public hearing was held on the 8th day of January before the planning commission. What results of the planning commission was five yes, zero no to approve the rezon request that was provided to us. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to either approve or deny.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I'll second the motion as well. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
If I have it high, and I know that puts me in the position of breaking that tie, so I'll vote aye as well. There are already two residences on that piece of property, and this actually separates those to where we have an appropriate rezon, so I'll vote aye on that. So it'd be two to one in favor. Next that we have on the agenda is a request for changing land use classification on parcel 049006 located on the Hawksness Circle. Planning and Development Office received a completed application on October 17th, 2023, from Mr. and Mrs. Majewski requesting a change from agricultural to rural residential on a 5.71 acre tract located on Hawksness Circle in Jasper. The intended purpose of the rezon, if approved, was to have the ability to build another residential structure. The public hearing was held on the 8th of January where the planning commission voted five yes, zero no to approve the rezon request on that piece of property. With that, do I have a motion for against?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next on our list is request for changing land use classification on parcel 028051005 on Grandview Road. The Planning and Development Office received an application on October the 27th from Bagwell and Spears requesting a change in land use classification of agriculture to estate residential on a 33.61 acre tract located on Grandview Road. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, was to develop it into a nine lot estate residential subdivision. Public hearing was held on January the 8th where the planning commission heard and voted five yes, zero no to approve the request. Do I have a motion for against?
I make a motion to approve with the condition that all roads be paved inside there.
All right, so I have a motion with the condition, approval with paved roads.
I'll second that motion.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is request for changing land use classification on parcel 041145001 located 52 Pettit Road in Jasper. Planning and Development Office received the application on November the 20th from Mr. and Mrs. Lewis requesting a change in classification of ag to rural residential on a 4.26 acre tract located on Pettit Road. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, was to bring the parcel into compliance and have the ability to build another residential structure. Public hearing was held on January the 8th where the planning commission voted five yes, zero no to approve this rezon request. Do I have a motion from the board?
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the list is a request in land, changing land use classification for parcel 018030005 located on Highway 136 Connector. Planning and Development Office received a completed application on November 17th from Affordable Investments LLC requesting a change in land use classification from ag to small ag on a 17.447 acre tract located on Highway 136 Connector. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, was to create two lots for rezon. Public hearing was held on January the 8th where the planning commission voted five yes, zero no for approval. Do I have a motion in the board?
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. And our last rezon for the evening is a request of change in land use classification for parcel 041190 located on 693 Upper Salem Church Road. The Planning and Development Office received a completed application on November 22nd from Mr. Stephen Smith requesting a change of land use classification from highway business to agriculture on 11.89 acre tract. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, was to have the ability to build a residential structure. Public hearing was held on January the 8th where the planning commission voted five yes, zero no to approve this request. Do I have a motion in the board?
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? That motion carries. Next item, and this goes back to our last meeting where we went through after the bylaws were updated for the Development Authority. The original Development Authority bylaws were written at a time when terms were six-year terms versus four-year terms, and in the process of updating and correcting to make it match state law, those terms changed. We did rectify almost all of the members the last time we had a meeting. I didn't catch that Ms. Shaw's was not, so her original expiration on her term was in 2027 based on the six-year appointment. It needed to be modified to change the expiration of the term until an expiration of September 8th, 2025. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve a resolution of amending her expiration of her term to make sure it's compliant with the new bylaw and state law.
So moved.
Second the motion.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next on our agenda is our employee recognitions. I'm going to go first with one who is not here with us tonight, but I do want to make sure that she gets recognized. We have had Ms. Candace Jarrett has been with the county now for 20 years, working for Pickens County. I know that she'd stated that she was not going to be able to attend tonight, but asked that we be able to provide her with a copy of the certificate at a later time, so I wanted to make sure to recognize Ms. Candace for her commitment to serve and for working with the county for the last 20 years. I know we have two others that want to recognize some employees as well. I'll ask Mr. Daniel Reeves to go first, if you would, from the Tax Commissioners Office.
As always, thank you to the Board Commissioners for allowing us to do this in this setting. As you know, about every three months, we do like to recognize employee of the quarter, and I guess I'm kind of feeling like a broken record a little bit because this person is one of the last three times. And it's, and it's not just because we think she's awesome, even though her gift card says you're awesome. It's not just because of that. Everything is merit-based. We pull reports at the end of the month, and we run the numbers of who's doing what, how many phone calls are entered, how many titles are processed, how many tags are renewed, how many customer comments you get. We pull every little thing, and they get points based on that. So it's all merit-based, and I mean, we can't say enough good things about Candace. She's here every day. She's got a good attitude. She has great customer service. She has accurate work. She just does a good job, and she has been the employee... And she has been the Employee of the Quarter for the last three quarters. It's never been done. And so we just want her to know how much we appreciate her and that means that we give her a, a certificate, gift card, day off of pay. It all comes with, with, with doing that. So we just want to know that we appreciate her and she broke a record. So we, so we appreciate her.
You could even try and move her down to the far end of the line.
I am. I am.
And somehow she still gets. Congratulations, Kelly. Thank you very much for, for making that presentation. And others may be looking around trying to figure out who's in any public safety people here. I know we've got Chief Prater to have a couple of recognitions. So I'd like to call Chief Prater to make those presentations.
Evening, Chairman Commissioners. Thank you for giving us a few minutes to recognize a couple of my employees that's, that's accomplished some personal and professional goals here this evening. First, I'd like to recognize Mr. Brantley. Where would he come forward? Brantley came to us last year. He comes from the dark side. From the fireside. I think he's been employed with the county since 2017 and he started taking the EMT course, I think, with the Sheriff's Department. And I think he got drank Kool-Aid a little bit going into the fireside of it, but he did his EMTA, finished it up right after he came over to us and then he chose to move on to get his EMT, or EMTB and then chose to get his EMTA. You know, years ago when I first took the EMT class, I think the entire class was 220 hour or so. And now I asked him a while ago what the EMTA was and I think it was, you said 300?
337.
What was it? And the EMTB was how many hours?
About 225.
So we're all about 100 hours now today. So it's not an easy class and, you know, you have to really respect anybody that chooses to go through these classes now. So he's went through both of them and he is now officially a licensed EMT for the state of Georgia. So I was going to present him with a letter of commendation this evening. And I'll read that letter. It says, "Brantley, from me, I want to congratulate you for the recent successful completion of the Department of Public Health Advanced Emergency Medical Technician A Course. I want to officially and publicly acknowledge that you are now a licensed EMTA in the state of Georgia. Since joining our team one year ago, you have demonstrated outstanding motivation and drive to become not only a licensed EMTA, but currently you are seeking firefighter one certification as well. It is a great pleasure and honor that I offer you this letter of commendation for a job well done. Please keep up the excellent work. I wish you continued success and a great future with your career here at Pickens County Fire Rescue. Congratulations, Brantley, where?
Chief, before you talk again, if I may, I want to share a story about this fellow.
I could tell something too, you know.
I had just doing volunteer fire department. Very first pressure fire I rolled on was Thanksgiving night. Was it last year, two years ago?
Two years ago.
Side of the mountain's on fire, but Brantley was there and he was actually still in his sheriff's office uniform. He was the first person to get to the scene and ran up the steps of this house while it was on fire and got the woman to come out. And I thought to myself at the time, that dude missed his calling. So we're glad to have you.
Next individual I'd like to recognize is Marshall Rhodes. He'd come forward. Marshall came to us about two years ago from Gimmer County, brought a wealth of knowledge, a lot of leadership skills with us. He's really done a, a really good job for us. So always interested to sit down and talk with him and talk about some issues and he's one of those that just shoots you straight. It's just a pleasure to sit down and talk with him. He, he tested last year for the position of lieutenant. He made the list and we have a vacancy that's schemed out. So he is, we have got down to him on the list and it's time to, to make him a lieutenant and put a little bit more weight on his shoulders. So tonight we're going to promote him here in front of you to make him official and I think it's an honor. It's a milestone in the career and we'd like to make it special. So his promotion warrant reads as, "To all shall I see these presence greeting, know yea that proposing special trust and confidence in the fidelity and abilities of the following personnel. I do promote Marshall Rhodes to the rank of lieutenant in the Pickens County Fire Rescue Services to rank as such from the 18th of January 2024. Disappointed he will therefore carefully and diligently discharge duties of the grade to which appointed by doing and performing all manner of things therein pertaining. And I do strictly charge and require all personnel of lesser grade to render obedience to appropriate orders. And these disappointees are to observe and follow such orders and directions as may be given from time to time by superiors acting, acting according to the mission, rules and policies governed in Pickens County Fire Rescue. Given under my hand at the Pickens County Administration Complex this 15th of February in the year of our Lord 2024, signed by me." We framed, we framed the promotion warrants for these dads to make it special. Lieutenant?
Thank you. Congratulations.
I could watch him. I didn't know if he had another one or not. I was going to send you to start promoting him. So thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. And thank you all for all your service, for all that you do and for continuing to make Pickens County one of the best places that we can imagine. We appreciate it. At this time, we'll move on into guest comments. So welcome forward. Anyone that has guest comments?
I can't tell. Mr. Chairman, has the Department of Transportation said anything about plans to relocate Highway 53 West in Pickens County, Georgia?
I've not heard of a, a plan of relocating. I have heard of a plan that it is being paved this year.
Well, the reason we ask is we know they've abandoned it, so we didn't know if they have another plan. I just wanted to know if it's sitting.
It is slated for paving, so in their spring, summer paving projects, it's supposed to be let up bid within the next couple of months. But we, I remember having this meeting last year when we talked and that one time it was on the calendar, it was slated to be paved this year. So we all hoped that that actually happens. Any other comments? With our amended agenda removing our executive session at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Always the fastest one.